Okay, good evening. Seeing Quorum, the chair opens up. The Wednesday, August 7th, 2024, meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board being held here, Mashpee Town Hall, Wacoiait Meeting Room, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live. It's being broadcast live on local channel eight and streamed live on the Mashpee website, www.mashpema.gov backslash channel hyphen eight. So I'd like to welcome everybody here today. I'd like to invite you to rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
(inaudible)
So just to let everybody know, Dale Oakley is a planning board member that's sitting on our 7:10 public hearings, and he's gonna be a little bit late. So if people will have the patience with this, I'd like to wait for him to come to open up the public hearing because it's a supermajority that you need for the vote. I anticipate voting tonight. I don't want him to miss anything in the public hearing section. And you need four votes if we... Michael Richardson has recused himself. So it's best to have five full members during those deliberations. Karen, did you have something that you wanted to say?
No, I just, I don't know, I... When it comes up, I'll say.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Yep, yep. So first order of business, approval of minutes. We have minutes from July 17th, 2024. Did anybody look at them, have any comments?
(inaudible)
I'll take a motion to approve the July 17th, 2024 minutes as presented.
So be.
Okay. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We also have minutes of Tuesday, June 25th, 2024. These were our Raise and Replace Workshop. That was our Raise and Replace Workshop at the Mashpee Public Library. I looked at them. I do have one comment, Chrissy. Under history on page one, it talks about there have been some meetings taking place in Pompanessett Beach. If you could somehow work in there that they were hosted by the Pompanessett Beach Association. So there's no confusion that they weren't town... They weren't organized by the town. They were organized by the Pompanessett Beach Association. And the town planner did attend one. But if everybody's good with them...
So move for the decision.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. I did give one to John in the back, and I said if he had any comments, we could look at them later. But I think they're pretty good. With that, I'd take a vote to accept them as presented.
Aye.
Aye? Anybody opposed? Okay. All right. So I'm gonna wait for Dale to open up the public...
So what, can we do anything else, though?
Yeah, we can go to...
How about the chair's report?
I'll do the chair's report. Okay. So I'm not gonna separate anything else because Karen Leslie listed everything on the agenda that I wanted to talk to. So that first button, the first item, I'm gonna table that one. The Planning Department staff, Rodney Collins, the town manager, is working on that. I think Evan, this is your last, last day as town planner consultant.
Correct.
So thank you for helping out during the transition. Rodney is working on stuff, and he's not ready to make an announcement yet. So we have to just wait for our town manager to do that. We have here a request for legal services regarding a previously endorsed A and R. So I put in a request for town council time for some legal advice about A and Rs. And it's town council's understanding, and I've read too, guidebooks about A and R. The state has published an A and R handbook, and it says, she said that, town council said that an A and R once approved can, or once endorsed, cannot be rescinded. So...
I would appreciate it if somebody would... I was reading the notes in the minutes, the last minutes, and this is what I got out of it. There's an ancient way behind, excuse me, oyster way called River Road, rear of property. I don't know where that is. River Road is town-owned land. You can't use town-owned land as available frontage. River Road comes out on Great Neck Road South, and it is eminent domain, excuse me, town land. River Road is not a real road, and therefore the A and R for this project must be rescinded. That was question mark, question mark. That was a person spoke on it. Since I don't know where these roads are, I would, I wonder if you could give me those answers.
Do you want a copy of the A and R that was endorsed?
I...
Well, I just wanna know where these...
River Road is, and before you go down to Lake Wildbeaten Way, there's a little parking lot, and you can walk the trail. That's River Road. And if you go down Red Brick Road to go to Montessor Island...
Okay.
Before you get to the causeway, there's a road that goes up. There, there's about six, seven houses, I forget the name of the street, but that's where River Road starts, at the end of that section, and it comes all the way out. But it, I used to drive it down years ago, but it's not, I don't know if it...
It's not a real road, is that true?
Well, it used to be, however, but...
It was a road, and it was recognized as a road for a very long time. It was an unimproved ancient way and recognized as a public way for many years. What the neighbors had asserted is that when the eminent domain taking occurred in 1986 or '07 for the Mashpee River Reservation, that eminent domain taking contained language that eliminated it as a public way. And the A and R plan endorsed did not recognize that eminent domain taking, and that it had no longer, that it no longer had the same rights of access as a typical ancient way would with the prescribed rights therein. So that's what they would be challenging.
Right. So you're saying, Mary, that there is no, once...
Town council said, once an A and R is endorsed, the body that endorsed it can't rescind it. Now, is there other legal action people can take?
Those are the two lots on the end of that development that they're trying to build, I think. There's two lots.
Correct. There's three lots there with inadequate frontage on the course.
Yeah.
One of the houses on that street, a round house, it's pretty, it's pretty cool. It's like a dome.
A dome.
Yeah. You know, but I used to drive up there all the time and go all the way through. And it butts, it butts up to Buffalo Head Bay, and it's the, the water, there's like a creek. Sometimes it was overflown, but it comes out into Seaberry, flows into...
I'm just gonna drive down there.
Yeah, Child's River or something like that.
You won't have to drive all the way down, but you can get to close.
Okay. So do you want me to keep this on the agenda?
Keep, you mean the explanation?
This item on the agenda?
Well, I don't know if it should be kept, if we can not do anything about it.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna mess anything up by keeping it on the agenda or having town council. Like, I think if the people that are aggrieved by a decision by the planning board, there's a process. I don't know what it is, I'm not a land use attorney, but I imagine there's a process to, to, to challenge that. I don't think coming to town and doing public comment is that process.
No.
So I think we need to...
I think it's in their hands now, that's...
I think it, yeah.
You know, so let's leave it at that.
Yeah.
If something comes up, comes to us, we can deal with it.
And what I can do is I can send the minutes to town council, just for the...
But I bet you those people bought those lots a long time ago, and they're ready to retire and saying, I wanna put my house up there.
Is there case law on that, or is there anything in a bylaw on that, that it cannot be rescinded?
I'm fairly confident it can't be rescinded.
If you look up the A and R handbook from Massachusetts...
I've seen it.
Right? You can download it as a PDF and search "rescind," and it'll come to this case law.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, time for the public hearing?
Well, I'm not gonna open it until Dale comes.
Oh, yeah.
So that was that. So I'm not gonna leave it on the agenda unless you, you tell me, you changed your mind. The report of an attractive nuisance in Aquay Highlands subdivision. What town council said was to send this to the building commissioner, which now that we have approved minutes, I will.
Okay.
That was it. That's the process. Clean water updates. So in your packet, I don't know if your packet copied right, mine didn't. It has the warrant articles in there, but they're kind of in the application for Gooseberry Island.
Yeah.
Yep, so you'll be looking at the Gooseberry Island application that was submitted to the Community Preservation Committee, and all of a sudden you see the warrant. So just, the warrant is in there. It's a very draft warrant. There's a lot of clean water articles on there, so please pay attention to that. There's a lot of money being asked for...
Yeah.
For, like, studies and, you know, kind of more details where our nitrogen management plan says, okay, this, you know, this next treatment facility should go here, while they're, they're asking for money for, for more work in engineering on that, so. And then the last thing, let's see, the next thing is August 26th. There's gonna be a report and a presentation to the select board, that's a Monday, about the Mashpee Wakebee Pond. So remember, we, we put aside $35,000 for UMass Dartmouth to look at the Mashpee Wakebee Pond? Well, there's gonna be a big presentation of the findings thus far on August 26th at the select board meeting, so I encourage everybody to go. And lastly, the Conservation Commission is reviewing all their regulations, and they've hit Regulation 25, which has prompted lots of public comment and public participation. So I just, I don't want to, as a planning board, you know, comment on it or anything like that, but if, as individuals, if you want to, I think they, I think they discuss it almost every Conservation Commission meeting, but it's Regulation 25, and it has to do with the land subject to coastal flow. Is that right, Michael?
I think it's on most of their agendas. I don't know the detail of the conversation, but...
I think it's on the S B's agenda next Monday.
Oh, okay. And it was, the reason why I put it on ours is it was on the select board's agenda, the last one I went to. But anyways, there will be a formal public hearing on Regulation 25 if, if changes are recommended, so just stay tuned. Okay, so that was my report. Evan, do you wanna go next?
I'm gonna look at your agenda, Karen.
Well, I think it was last week I did provide you the, a draft of the comprehensive The draft has been provided to the Cape Cod Commission for preliminary review. I'm still awaiting, or at least I have sent some requests to both the Historical Commission and to the tribe for some final information, mostly for the heritage present, impact, not, not, it's specifically for the heritage preservation element, but I haven't heard back, so I would, I've made a note of that request for my successor, so it can be followed up on, and so you are aware of it.
They don't give you any updated, previous, you know?
What I had specifically asked for was, like, I think I had updated you on this last time, was for an insert or a specific section of the preservation element to be written, to be authored by the tribe relative to Wampanoag culture, because it's pretty thin relative to the tribe. And there was some positive response, but I haven't had reply, so I pinged it also to the Historical Commission, who did reply, at least acknowledged the request, but I don't know what the status is of them working on it. But I did wanna at least get the draft minus that potential addition to the commission to begin their review. In the event that they have comments, it's, it's gonna wanna be jumped on. Hopefully you guys can carry that across the finish line without me. Harbor Management Planning Committee has been on a bit of a hiatus. I do know that they met recently, and I was not in attendance on that meeting, it was on the day I was not scheduled for work and wasn't a part of my consulting arrangement either, so I'm not able to report on that tonight. Housing production plan is no, no update. It'll have to be somebody else to finish that one as well.
Okay. All right, let's...
Not without trying.
Let's do board member committee reports, and then after that, I'll, I'll text Dale, see how, where he is. Cape Cod Commission, so the One Cape Summit is September 18th and 19th. I don't know if I announced that before, but you can go on the Cape Cod Commission website and sign up for the One Cape Summit. I think that there is funding in our department to pay for that. That's good. That's usually really good. Charter Review Committee, our August meeting was canceled, but we're starting to figure out where we have consensus and where we don't, and just work on the things that we can get passed easily first and save the controversial stuff till the end. So we're still working on it. Community Preservation Committee, our next meeting is August 20th. There's two active applications. One is for the purchase of Gooseberry Island, and the other one is a purchase of 475 Route 151, Nathan Ellis Highway. So they were in your packet. I didn't know if you had any comments on that, if you thought they... What I'd really like to know is, like, do you have, you know, does the board feel we should keep going forward on these? I'm your representative to the CPC. Do you see any big barriers to making these purchases?
I like Gooseberry Island, see if we can purchase that, but we gotta rough customer who owns it.
Yeah, that's a few dollars, too.
Yeah.
Well, it's, he wants eight million, and we'd have to get an appraisal. What would we do with that? Would it just be open space?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Would we ever build a wooden bridge to...
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
That's not gonna happen.
They're still just shell fishing all around it.
Yeah, I know. I read, I read that stuff, and I looked at his 2023 decision.
We're gonna have the annual planning board picnic out there. That's about it.
That 475, I went out there personally with Richard, who's on the CPC, and it's a beautiful place. I, I just thought it was fabulous. It's, it's got like a fourplex there with two bedrooms. People stay there. Those buildings could be used for something important in recreation, like, I mean, whether his idea, he had an idea, and I'll mention it, was let people, affordable housing people stay in it for no more than one year, but then I said, you know, if they don't find another place, they'll never wanna leave that place, because it's that beautiful. It's really beautiful with the waterfront. You know, you could use those buildings for recreation for kids, like, maybe one building is a, a painting thing, or, you know, I'm just making it up, something, but then you might, you'd have to staff it, too. So maybe that wouldn't work, but it could be volunteers. I mean, and you wouldn't wanna tear down those buildings, that building. Did you see it, Evan?
I'm familiar with the property.
I think it's beautiful. So I, I would like the CPC to pursue that.
So I was thinking about 475 is, and you can put aside community preservation funds for things like engineering and planning, and I was thinking, we, there's so much potential to 475 that I...
Definitely.
I think we should, we should spend a little bit of money and have a plan, conceptual plans done. I think that our recreation department has some good ideas, but is very busy doing lots of stuff right now, and having a professional planner look at it, hi Dale, having a professional planner look at that, or an engineering firm look at that, about our possibilities, and then our recreation department, and the select board is our recreation commission, just go through and say, bing, 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 bing. Because I wouldn't wanna spend all that money on it and just have it sit there and go, what are we gonna do next?
No, you have to have a plan.
I think that...
There's a lot of money to spend, but no plan.
Yeah.
And we don't have to go to town meeting for that. We get, we have $40,000 a year put aside, and I'd like to spend a little bit. Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Sounds, sounds good. I had a question on Gooseberry.
Yep.
If the town does not take the land or buy the land, what other functional use is there? And what chance of functional use to be used on there?
I don't know.
It could still...
In my opinion, the land is worthless.
It could build a house on it.
Okay.
And he has to bring by boat, though.
By boat. So there, there's minimal operational use of that land.
The appraisal will cap, capture all of that. What we're doing right now in the Community Preservation Committee is we're going into executive session, as we're allowed to by open meeting law, to talk about those things in executive session. But we can't, and we say this publicly all the time, we can't buy it for more than the appraised price.
Yeah.
But we can talk about the negotiating position of the town in executive session.
It's got all kinds of positive attributes, but it's very expensive to buy, and it's gonna be very difficult to get things going.
What positive attributes?
Long range, you know, long range, it's probably not a bad idea.
What positive attributes?
I mean, it's, as you said, it's a beautiful piece of property, the town owns it and everything else, and there are things we can do, but there's an awful lot of money that would have to be spent to do that, so, I mean...
Were you talking about Gooseberry Island?
Yeah.
So you're for it as long as it's, it's a reasonable price?
I think we should look at it for sure. It's a great piece of property to use for something. I just don't think down the road it's gonna cost a lot of money to do anything.
Wasn't, when it first was gonna build, there was, he said he had access...
Right.
...to the road, and he went to Coolin. I don't know whatever happened about that, to get onto the alleys, because I have access to build a bridge.
There was a bridge permitted in the 20s for Gooseberry.
They couldn't put a footing on the side, right?
Yeah, okay, that's what, correct.
Yeah, so, so town council is joining the CPC in executive session, so...
Well, there are lots of questions...
A little bit of public hearing, though, now.
Okay.
There are a lot of questions that are brought up, you know, whether this could be a regulatory taking, you know, that stuff that we don't wanna talk about here.
Right.
No.
It would be a great aquaculture operation.
Yeah, that's what I said earlier.
So you're generally in, in favor of the purchase?
Yeah, if it's for good, if it's for, like, good things, you know?
A nice place to bring kids there in the summer.
Yeah.
And, you know, explore around the little island, you know, for, like, day, you know, that summer camps they have. You know, that would be a nice thing, because they could put a little boat in and ferry them over there.
So I put both active CPC applications in the packet.
All right, we got a little bit of public hearing, people.
Okay, so seeing the appointed time is, has arrived, the chair opens up the 7:10 and the 7:15 public hearings. So I'll read the public hearing notice into the, the record. Pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 40A, Section 9, and the Mashpee zoning bylaw, Sections 174-24C and 174-47, the Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 15th, 2024, at 7:10 in the Wacoiait Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. 02649, to consider an application made by New Seaberry Homes LLC for approval of a special permit for a cluster subdivision. The applicant proposes to divide the properties identified in Mashpee Assessors Map 110, Parcels 58, 59, 80, 82, 83, and 97, and which are addressed as 52 and 58 Red Brook Road and 23, 29, 41, and 47 Great Oak Road comprised of 318, 318,064 square feet into seven new building lots ranging in size between 15,016 square feet and 17,083 square feet. The applicant proposes that the planning board authorize minimum lot sizes of 10,000 square feet with 15-foot side and rear setbacks with 40-foot setbacks, front setbacks, while preserving 1,081,266 square feet as protected open space, 57% of total land area. The plans and submitted application can be viewed, viewed in the offices of the town clerk or the town planner submitted by K D Faulkner, Karen D Faulkner Chair. Publication dates Friday, April 19th, 2023, 2024, sorry, and Friday, April 26th, 2024, and that public hearing was continued to today. Here's the second public hearing notice pursuant to Mass General Law.
Right.
You can recuse yourself, sir.
All right.
You don't have to wait and listen to me read it out.
The game is on.
So, I know.
The game's over.
Okay. Pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 41, Section 81T, and the Mashpee Rules and Regulations governing the subdivision of land, the Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 15th, 2024, at 7:15 in the Wacoiait Meeting Room at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, 02649, to consider an application made by New Seaberry Homes LLC for approval of a definitive subdivision plan of land that would divide six parcels into seven building lots off of Great Oak Road and Red Brook Road. The properties are identified in Mashpee Assessors Map as a map 110, Parcels 58, 59, 80, 82, 83, and 97, and are addressed as 52 and 58 Red Brook Road and 23, 29, 41, and 47 Great Oak Road. The submitted plans proposes to create lots that are between 15,016 square feet and 17,083 square feet in the size, in size, and proposes to protect 181,266 square feet of open space, sorry, as land as open space. The lots proposed would be accessed by a cul-de-sac called Osprey Court. Plans may be reviewed in the offices of the town clerk or town planner at Mashpee Town Hall, submitted by Karen D Faulkner Chair, Mashpee Planning Board. Publication dates Friday, April 19th, 2024, and Friday, April 26th, 2024, and that public hearing was continued to today. So just wanna give a quick update before I recognize the project proponent, but the project proponent can come up and sit up front. So we, so Evan Leir did write the decision, a draft decision. It is written in a, in a, in a positive way. It's, it's on your, right, it's on your desk, it's redlined. So that was sent to town council, and that was redlined. I'm just giving it to you today. It's pretty straightforward, though, if you wanna take a minute and look at it. And so the project proponent has it now, we all have it, and I'd like to recognize the project proponent to see if they have any updates or any comments on the proposed agreement, I mean, decision.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Brian Hergation, professional engineer with VSC Group, and I'm representing the applicant. Nick Alanas from New Seaberry is also here with me. I did have some time to go through it pretty quickly, but I, and I just highlighted a couple of things, which I, some corrections, I think. Just looking at the, the first page, the heading underneath, Osprey Court, Cluster Subdivision, it references Blue Castle Drive slash DeGrasse Road, so we might wanna...
We're gonna strike that, okay?
Strike that. Then if you wanted to jump to the conditions, number five, just a clarification, because we did include, you know, the detailing for that sign, that's a separate approval process for the sign. I just wanna confirm that.
Would you be able to follow that process? So it goes to design review, and then we get to see it as well?
Okay, well, that's, I just wanna, yeah, I'm not looking for any favors, I'm just trying to clarify the process, because we did include the detail of it on the plans, which you're, hope, may be approving.
The bylaw does allow you to be the, the granting authority, the decision maker on the sign if the detail is proposed in the sheet. I just didn't notice the detail on the proposed sheet, which is why the language is proposed in the decision as it is.
Gotcha.
You can't regulate content of signs, you really are only regulating the dimensions, so the nature of the sign beyond the detail as provided in the, in the plans would be adequate, and you could approve it tonight absent this procedure.
So Ed, did you, you pointed it out, what page is it on?
Yeah, it's on page C-5.1, C dash 5.1, Stone Sign, a couple of pillars inside a, it's like six, four by six, four by, excuse me, open area where a free public sign is placed was pretty acceptable, and the location of that is shown on the site plan now, too.
All right. Given that the detail sheets are referenced in the first condition of the decision, that detail becomes a requirement of the... that detail becomes a requirement of the, of the project proponent, and you could strike this provision if you felt it was appropriate.
So, yeah.
Any reason to have to go to design review?
No, not with the detail included on the sheet.
So did you, did you find it, Karen?
No, I didn't.
It's the second to the last sheet.
Oh, yeah, I have it. I just see it.
Yes, okay.
I have the sheet.
Why don't you pass that over to Dale and, I mean, I like, I, I like the sign.
Yeah, that looks good.
You like it, it's okay? So then we can just strike condition number five. Is that good with everybody?
Yep.
All right, if I can continue, number six. First sentence, the applicant shall be responsible for the installation. It says street sign, but I think the intent is street light.
Yes, indeed.
And then the next word is across from the proposed subdivision. But that's not land that's owned by the applicant. Where we have it shown is on our side of the, on the corner. So I think that's something that needs to be, that should be corrected as well.
You could just say, "street light to illuminate the new intersection." "The street light as shown on the site plan to illuminate the new intersection that night."
Yeah, that sounds good.
Perfect.
And what, what kind of plan did you say, street plan?
No, so the installation of a new, of a street light as shown on, I'll give you the sheet number if you'd like. I think that's probably what you're looking for. Around electric, is it on four or is it on three?
Probably the fourth sheet and layout materials.
It's on there, it's just, I'm just looking for the call out for it. It's on sheet 2.0. It's on, it's on three sheets, but it's called out as light pole typical on sheet C-2.0.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Yes. No, I guess the only other, just a very minor correction. On number 16, the second line, "Secure the construction of the subdivision way in the installation of municipal services." Set of service, that's it.
I don't know where 16 is. Oh, it's in red.
It's in red, I'm sorry.
All right.
Yep.
I actually noted one other, I think unintentional typo, but I'm going to ask a question first.
Well, wait, so you guys are, no more? No more comments?
I didn't.
That's it, yeah.
Okay, we'll go to Evan, go ahead, Evan.
I believe the proposed setbacks for the subdivision are 40-foot front, 15 side and rear.
Yeah, I think that's what we have.
15.
Correct. Just if you, I, as you can tell from the title block of this decision, I had edited from a previous decision.
Yeah, so it's 40, 15, and 15.
If you look at the condition number four, it inadvertently and accidentally notes the side and rear building setbacks as 10 feet. They should be 15 feet.
Okay.
All other dimensional criteria are consistent with the proposed plans.
That five foot with the shed is okay?
Yeah, that should be right.
That's the, that's just consistent with the requirements of the bylaw.
Anything else, Evan?
No.
Ed, you have any?
I, I just had a, it looks like Brian and Evan have hit everything I saw. I did have one quick question. Under 13, they struck, the Town Council struck out the, within 60 days. And, but what she left was, "The decision shall not take effect. No work shall be commenced on construction on this project until decision has been so recorded." And I don't think it's mentioned about being recorded prior to that, so the word should say, "Has been recorded at the registry of deeds."
So.
Then it, so I would say, delete the word "so," and then continue the sentence, "has been recorded at the registry of deeds." And then there's another reference, "has been so recorded at the said registry of deeds." The next item 15 mentions it. Obviously, you don't need number 14. Let me just ask Evan that this question on 16. Prior to the planning board's endorsement, the applicant shall secure the construction of the subdivision way and installation, meaning what?
Well, you know, the security isn't actually a requirement that you need to vest, because they could build the houses or the road in totality first, and then commence construction.
And municipal services.
What does it mean to security, providing a surety, a security?
Correct.
Right, so I would say.
Well, this is what Town Council wrote.
Right, but that, but that means you're going to provide the surety before you even sign an endorsement. Why would they provide surety without the endorsement?
And they might not want to provide security, like, there's not a requirement to secure it unless, because they just, well, no, you need, you need to bind it by a covenant. We'll need a reference covenant, yeah.
Correct, right.
So that's the reference, the references to a covenant in this case.
Right, but.
Not necessarily cash security.
Correct, right. So a subdivision covenant, and as long, it's not, doesn't specify what that security is. They just need to provide evidence of that. I guess that's acceptable, that would be acceptable, right, Nick?
In general, in general practice, and this is something I missed, generally a covenant to be recorded is referenced on the subdivision plan to be recorded. And alongside the recording of the subdivision plan will be a formy general covenant securing the installation of municipal facilities, or, excuse me, of infrastructure. And so perhaps we should just ask that a covenant reference be made on the title sheet, and that at the time of endorsement, the covenant gets recorded alongside the plan. That is common practice for you.
Right, but it can't be prior to the board's endorsement.
Well, why not?
If the board can't sign the plans first, and they both get recorded at the same time, signed plans and the covenant, right? They have to provide the covenant first.
It's typically not a condition we've put in, in our permits. It's generally not one we've included over.
I don't see any problem with, yeah, providing some kind of security comment. I, I don't think that's a problem. I think it just needs to be, do you, the way it's worded, with the correction of municipal services, right? The way it's worded, I guess, Brian and Nick, do you have any problem providing the evidence of securing the construction with the covenant? So that it can be endorsed? Because right now, you just can't show up at the MyLars, you're going to bring this covenant.
Right, the way, no, I agree with you, that the, prior to endorsement.
Right.
Doesn't seem to make sense, but.
Typically, the plan sheet that is cited in this document would include a notation, "This subdivision is bound by a covenant dated." Not even a book and page reference. So I feel like if that notation were included on the plan set itself, which is referenced in the first condition, then you needn't have a separate one requiring it. But we need to have a covenant agreement that can be signed at the same time the subdivision plan is signed, so that both can go to the registry of deeds. Does that make sense?
Yeah, at the same time.
You can just mark that down on the plans and then put them up to them, right?
Yeah, I guess, I have just another question about it, but you can take it offline.
So you, so our comment to Town Council is, is that that word "prior" is causing a problem with the sequence of events, right?
Could you just enumerate for me, town engineer, town planner, or anyone, the order? When you say, "The covenant and the subdivision plan are signed contemporaneously." Right there, together. When, what comes after that?
Well, once, once a covenant is recorded, it binds the applicant to completing the installation of the utilities before the building permit can be issued.
Okay.
Unless the installation of facilities is further secured by some other mechanism, either cash, a performance bond, or a tripartite agreement. And so generally, in the subdivisions we've done here, a covenant is provided to the board, and a date is referenced, a covenant and agreement with a specific date is referenced on the plan sheet itself, and they get recorded together.
So this number 16 should start with, "The applicant/owner shall secure the construction of the subdivision way and the installation of municipal services as required by General Law Section, Chapter 41, Section 81U." And then we have to have.
Through the recording, preparation, recording of a covenant for the subdivision or other suitable means acceptable by the board.
I mean, I don't think that this is like, I think we're making a, because I'm assuming you guys are going to covenant the road.
Yeah.
That's like a given. The covenant and agreement is the standard form that goes on record at the registry of deeds. You might need to sign it, but there's no reason you can't do that between now and when you get a final plan, and you guys all have to endorse a MyLar. You don't have a MyLar tonight.
Right.
Yeah, so I guess it's not.
Through the preparation and signature of an execution of a covenant.
I guess it's not that critical. Now, we just need to talk about when and how you do the signatures.
Right.
Because next week, you could have the MyLars and a covenant all set to go, and then just got to work out the plan to coordinate signatures from the board members.
Well, right.
Should you vote to approve it?
Right. So we'll, I'll float that language to Town Council.
Okay.
Okay, through the preparation and execution of a covenant. And you're going to add a reference to the covenant on the plans.
I will. I, to be honest, I don't fully understand the meaning of the word covenant, so I'm having a little hard time with that, but I can.
So.
Just a promise that you're going to get it done.
In the subdivision control law, you're, you're required, you're required to install the utilities and build a road to give access to the lots that the board may be approving. The covenant is generally the first mechanism any developer will choose to achieve the security, because there's no cash involved. It's saying, you're not going to get any building permits until you achieve what is required of you to gain access. But you are likely, after you put binder down, to want to begin construction of the houses and get building permits prior to final paving, at which time you would ask for a release from that covenant and install a cash security or some other appropriate method of security. So the covenant is just a legal agreement saying, "We agree to not receive building permits until we've held up our end of the bargain."
Because you don't want to put the final coat down and still be construction.
Yeah, I mean, everything, most of the infrastructure is already going to be in before, before it even gets paved, so.
You know, with the lines for the signature and all that. Okay, so we just need to make a reference to that on the title sheet, then?
Oh, there is.
Right there. And it should probably be on sheet C-0.0. That, that's the one that's going to go on record at the registry.
Sorry, plan, plan sheet C-.
0.0. The one that you sign and that gets recorded.
Okay.
And it says, "This plan is subject to covenant dated."
Oh, it's there, see?
And attached here, too.
So that's the reference I'm looking for.
It's a standard thing you always put on.
So if we can, all that need happen.
You already did it. You're already ahead of yourself.
They should provide to the board this week a covenant agreement. It's a standard form, you can get it at the planning department's website.
Okay.
Fill it out with the appropriate information, transmit it to planning department staff or, or Mary. This is my last day, guys, so that the board can obtain the appropriate signatures, and you can have that recorded. Once that's done, the MyLar can be signed, and there is no issue with the language council's provided.
Correct, absolutely. Yep.
So we can keep the prior or start with the?
No, we can, we can leave it alone.
If there's an understanding, I feel like we can accomplish that.
Yep, yep. So it.
You can leave it alone.
Yep.
So leave 16 as is.
Please. Wasn't sure if you'd already done it, that's all.
Okay. So Ed, any more comments?
No.
Evan?
No.
Karen?
No. I have a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
A question.
You saved me.
pertaining to, under the conditions, number three, very brief one. Allowed use shall be a single-family residence and accessory structures on seven lots. Can anybody explain the intent of the accessory structures? And do what the relationship that they may have with ADUs? Auxiliary, accessory dwelling units.
I mean.
That, that accessory has to do with like a shed, right?
Yeah, well, any, any accessory structure that's allowed under the bylaw.
Okay.
It's kind of a nothing condition. You could strike it, and their rights wouldn't change. They can still, it's a residential district, you're not providing any other allowed uses. This is really just memorializing what the bylaw requires. So it could be an ADU detached, it could be a garage, it could be a shed, it could be a small ground-mounted solar array, but it is only those accessory uses that are allowed under the current zoning bylaw.
Yeah, it just never came up in conversation in, or in discussion, I should say.
Right. You could strike this, and it would bear no impact.
I think these are kind of standard things that we put in our decisions.
Yes.
Yeah. So you're good with that?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Dale, any comments?
No comments.
No, I'm good with this.
Okay. I just wanted, I just had it. Okay. From condition number eight. Would anybody object to striking the word customarily? Construction activities, it would say, "Construction activities shall not take place." I just think customarily is going to.
Leave room for.
Leave room for somebody in the field going, oh, customa.
Condition eight?
Condition eight about the construction hours.
I agree with that.
Strike the word customarily.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, you don't need that word, that's superfluous.
And then number 12. Take out, take out the word substantial. "No building or occupancy permits shall be issued while there exists any violation of the conditions of this special permit." I mean, if something is, you know, can't be met, and it's trivial, then come to us, and we'll amend the waiver, right? We'll amend that.
Yeah, I agree. Words like that just create.
Create trouble.
Fights, yeah.
All right, so now I'm going to open it up. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to comment on Osprey Court? The last thing I think we need to do before we close the public, public hearing is, did we vote on the waivers requested?
No, and you need to.
And are they in the decisions?
It says that they were.
We have it, we have it, we have it.
I referenced them, and I referenced you, the draft states that you authorized them on today's date. So you do need to take a vote.
So would you bring us through them?
It's just the one relative to the installation of a four-foot-wide sidewalk on at least one side of the street.
And where, I'm sorry, where do you note that?
It's on cover of the, of the cover sheet, and it's noted.
Decision.
Yeah. I read it, I just don't remember where I read it.
Here we go, it's finding 15.
The pages are all messed up.
Walks minimum four feet wide.
Okay, so 15. "In connection with the definitive subdivision plan application submitted in conjunction with this special permit application, the applicant requested a waiver from Section 9, and must, that must be I, of the Board's Rules and Regulations Governing the Subdivision of Land, which requires that sidewalks with a minimum width of four feet shall be installed on at least one side of a street." So to waive that, I'd need a motion to waive that section of our Board's Rules and Regulations Governing the Subdivision of Land, Section 9I, waiving the requirement that sidewalks with a minimum width of four feet be installed on at least one side of the street.
So be, I'll waive it.
Second.
Any comments? Any discussion? All in favor to waive that requirement, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that's unanimous. Okay, and I had one more question for you on the plans. So that, that open space area that's being used for stormwater management, has a fence around it?
Yes.
Right? Why do you put a fence around it?
Safety.
Safety? Is that because you think there's going to be water pooling there?
No, just because we wouldn't want, you know, and it's, it's a liability, too, for the owners, but you wouldn't want kids rolling off. I mean, it's a, it's a big drop. But you wouldn't want kids rolling off. I mean, it's a big drop. Not that there's gonna be standing water in there because our calculations show that will drain out. Even in a hundred-year storm, it drains out and, I don't know, I can't remember, a matter of hours. But it's more just a safety thing, you know, there's kids in the area. We wouldn't want kids running down there playing, falling in, hitting their head on a rock or something.
It's a good place to go sledding. In the winter time, I used to bring my son in there.
And there's a gate?
Yes.
There's a gate? Okay.
There is. And actually, that was, one of Ed's last comments was to show the gate. And the location is kind of, we're gonna kind of figure that out.
Yep.
But we've shown it. We've shown a tentative location on the plans.
Well, I was just thinking, because when we, remember we did the soul of bylaw? The fence had to be six feet up, six inches up to let animals go in and out.
Yep.
But I think the gate is enough. I think if something large got caught in there, you'd be able to open up the gate. Does that sound good with everybody?
Yeah, the fence was, was one of my suggestions-
Okay.
-for safety.
Yep.
Just that, these days, we can't be too careful.
We always do it, especially in residential. Just a good practice, I think, yeah.
Yep. Okay. If nobody else has any comments, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So be.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so now we deliberate. The, this decision, as amended, is written so that it has a unanimous positive vote. So, I'd entertain a motion to approve this decision, approving this cluster subdivision as amended.
So be.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Good luck.
Congratulations.
We appreciate it.
Sure. I'll scan that in and send it to town council and then-
Sounds good.
Get it to whoever's working in the planning department.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So, the next item is public comment, and this is public comment for anything that's not on the agenda. So, we have raise and replace on the agenda. Okay.
Hi, I'm John Malloy with Say Poppin' Us at Bay.
We got Mike back in, right?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I always forget about Mike. Hold on. Well, I don't always forget about Michael.
Can't leave Mike out there.
Thank you, Dennis.
Yeah.
I know. I know. All right. So, now we're on public comment, and John Malloy was just about to give us his public comment. Go ahead.
Great. I'm John Malloy with Say Poppin' Us at Bay. I've been on the board of directors of SPB since early 2013. And I just wanted to come in and thank Evan for everything he's done to help us along the way. SPB has been a great public-private partnership with the town. We have had a great working relationship with the town. Evan has been one of those people that's really helped us do what we needed to do over these last eleven years. We've made tremendous progress. There's a lot more to go. We're in the middle of applying for grants. And I know Evan and I have had conversations about getting help on grants and identifying opportunities and things. And hopefully, we can continue to work with whoever the new person is. But I just wanted to take a minute and thank you, Evan, for everything you did, because it was really helpful. Thanks.
We got a few of those grants too. We capped it some money.
We did get a couple, and we applied for a third, $2 million. We'll see what happens.
Good luck. Thanks, John.
Okay. Old business. And so, as I go through these, if you want to say something, please just get my attention. We did, it's, the next on old business is raise and replace bylaw amendment. We have not set up any dates for neighborhood tours.
No, we haven't.
I'm thinking that the fall is better for that, just just because of the weather. There are, there was a question about the benefits of floodplains at our workshop at the library. So, in your packet, there is a report. It was a report prepared, it's called "The Natural and Beneficial Functions of Floodplane." It was prepared by, I forget who it was prepared by, but it was prepared for US Congress. So, I had gotten in touch with a national association of floodplain managers. And there had been some links to, you know, the benefits of floodplains. But there was no peer-reviewed, you know, document. So, they sent that to me. So, anyways, if you can, if you Google the title, you'll come up with the PDF as well. And then the timeline for amendments, this is something that we need to, in order for it to be on the May town meeting warrant, this is something we have to have ready to go very early February. So, we still have time, but we can't dilly-dally too much. Okay? And then, if everybody's all set, nobody has public comment, we'll move on to new business. Possible cancellation of the August twenty-first, 2024 Planning Board meeting. I think that if we don't have any A and Rs that come in that are time-sensitive and that need to be prepared and looked at in 21 days, then I propose to cancel the August twenty-first.
And even with the A and Rs, they make the, even though we receive those applications in my office, they file it at your meetings. The 21 days commences at your meeting.
At the meeting. Oh, good.
So, if you cancel the twenty-first, there's no risk for A and Rs.
I second that.
So, how do you guys feel about that unless you, I don't, right now, we don't have anything on there? Would you like, I take a motion to cancel that?
I second.
Karen, you second? Okay.
I made the motion.
Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
When would be your next meeting then?
Be September fourth. And town council has updates on the litigation, so put pencil in a six o'clock start on September fourth. We might be able to have a seven o'clock start, but a six o'clock start might be better. And then we can get a whole full hour with town council. Okay. Next thing is vote to refer a special permit application submitted by Island Pickle LLC to the Cape Cod Commission as a mandatory development of regional impact. So, Evan, do you want to bring us through that?
Sure. I mean, in your general, since I've started here, applications that trigger mandatory referrals, we've accepted the application and we opened the public hearing, and then you make the referral. And so, when pressed on the subject, I thought about it a little bit. Because it's always created a bit of an administrative burden for the department to do it in that procedure for the following reasons. First, we have to go through all of the notice requirements for the referral as you would normally, or as you're required to under the zoning act. And then you make the referral, though, and the DRI process commences, and it could be six months or a year before you get it back. And then I have to notice the butters again, because so much time has gone by. And the Cape Cod Commission Act specifically freezes the statutory timelines under the zoning act for special permits. So, when considering all of those facts, it seems prudent to make the referral at the time the application is received prior to the opening of a public hearing, because then it freezes there. You're still required to open the public hearing, but the timeline stops ticking the date you make the referral. So, once you get, the commission reviews a project and provides notice to the planning board that an affirmative decision has occurred, we would then advertise the public hearing at that date. And so, I confirmed this, the ability to do this with legal counsel. There's nothing in the Cape Cod Commission Act that requires or, requires you to open it before or after. And there seems to be no harm to make the referral before, given the freeze provisions of the act. And so, I suggested, after receiving that opinion and after receiving the application for the pickleball facility at Evergreen Circle, to ask you to make the referral tonight where the, if so made, the timelines would freeze and the applicant could commence their DRI review process with the commission. So, I would suggest that you make the referral this evening.
That makes sense. More sense.
That sounds a good idea.
So, this was, we changed the bylaw for this. Right? This was, this was a slight amendment to our zoning bylaw that would allow this facility-
Correct. Yes, yes.
And that bylaw has been approved by the AG?
I am unaware of the AG status. Now, I, the decision of the attorney general has either been recently provided or is indefinitely pending. That doesn't negate the fact, though, that the applicant submitted a special permit application that you are required to open a public hearing for, for a facility of 35,000 square feet. So, I think you should make the referral notwithstanding the AG's response. Because you have to open a public hearing.
Oh, all right. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go one step further. Has the applicant applied to the Cape Cod Commission for a DRI?
Yes.
Okay, then it's out of our hands.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, good. So, all right, so this application for special permit, the name of the applicant is William Russell. The owner of the property is Evergreen Energy LLC. Its present use is a heavy equipment storage facility. The proposed use is a plus or minus 37,000-square-foot indoor recreation facility, which town meeting voted that that would be an allowed use, and it's under review by the attorney general. It's a mandatory referral to the Cape Cod Commission. So, I would, I think we have to take a motion, right? I'd accept a motion and a second to refer this application to the Cape Cod Commission as a development of regional impact.
So moved.
Second.
And it's a mandatory referral.
They won't commence, they won't commence their review of that application until they receive the referral from municipal agency.
Right, right.
So, they've received an application, but they won't, you know, get the wheels in motion until the referral is received by you or by any other agency that's relevant.
Okay, so in our packet, we have the referral form. It's referred by the municipal agent is Mashpee Planning Board, care of the planning department. It's a mandatory referral. The project name is Island Pickle Indoor Recreational Facility at 51 Evergreen Circle, Mashpee. The applicant is William Russell of 166 Hollidge Lane in Marston's Mills. Is that all correct? Okay. And the project involves construction of a 37,000-square-foot plus-or-minus building on a 3.6-acre parcel of land, which will house a restaurant tavern of 2,500 square feet, plus or minus, and ten indoor pickleball courts, six indoor golf simulators.
Golf simulators.
Okay.
Could be gold golf simulator.
Yeah, I'm gonna join.
Okay. Locker rooms and general common areas encompassing 34,500 square feet, plus or minus. Parking outside is proposed to include 91 parking spaces, plus or minus. List municipal agencies before which the municipal, I'm sorry, the municipal development permit is pending or required for the project, and it's a special permit from the Mashpee Planning Board. There's nothing else we need to check off, right?
No, the other side of that sheet is relative to discretionary referrals under limited auspices of the-
All right, so there's a, there's a first and a second for that motion to approve that and authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the planning board?
So be.
Second.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Can you change that word golf? Initial it?
I initialed it.
Okay.
Okay, so, should I scan that in and get that to Karen Leslie?
Yes, please.
All right. Want a copy?
Sorry for how long it took to get out of council, Bill.
Progress.
Longer than it should have.
Progress. Hope to see you in a few minutes. Thank you, Karen.
All right. Board engineer report. Anything under review right now?
So, the only other thing that we have going on in the field is the work that we have mentioned in the last meeting. You may or may not remember Casper Circle is wrapping up its work. There was a couple of structures that had been covered up by pavement. They brought the covers to grade, concreted them all in. They haven't done final paving yet. They're gonna try to do that this month. They're in the queue with Lawrence Lynch Corporation for paving. So, hopefully, that'll happen. At least that's what I remember hearing.
Excuse me. It may or may not be, turn out to be that contractor, but they're planning to try to finish their paving. As you know, the last visit I made to Osprey Circle, excuse me, Aquay Highlands, you know, was a vote by the board the last meeting. I plan to go there next month to take a look at things, to see how they look. Really waiting for the side slopes to germinate where the seating was done. So, I think that's on autopilot for the time being. There's really no other active efforts underway. I have reviewed a recent project, and it escapes me which one it is now for the zoning board of appeals. I can't remember which one it is. Recently did a peer review of that a couple of weeks ago. But there's really no other activity at the moment. I will also say that on your September fourth hearing, I will be in Italy. I'll be in the Venice area with family. My son-in-law lives originally from that area, so we're visiting his family and with my family and my daughter, granddaughters. And I will not be thinking about the Mashpee Planning Board on that one. However, if there's a major project that gets thrown at you between now and then, I will make sure to have proper peer review or at least have some kind of preliminary review done for you, either by me or by one of my people with my oversight, so.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything pending.
Coming, right. Nothing, nothing at the moment.
Okay. All right.
And I guess I also want to just say as a final word that I'm gonna miss Evan. It's been great having him here and having him guide everything that I've done and helping, I think, the board. He's gonna be missed. And the guy or girl, man or woman, that takes his place is gonna have to fill big shoes, so. I think whoever it is will need to be talking to you. So, I think Mr. Collins needs to know that you're to be on call for some amount of money. There ought to be at least a budget put aside for your phone calls.
They're here.
And I'm sorry that we, that we also lost Karen Leslie. You know, good for her, good thing for her, bad thing for us, right? But hopefully, you'll get that position filled as well, because that's a key position that kind of helped Evan with a various number of different things. So, hopefully, that'll, that'll help.
Is the town advertising for her replacement?
I don't know, Karen.
Oh, you don't know?
I don't know. Well, if you recall, Karen is my fourth assistant, the third I hired. And for each time, I was alone for seven months. So, hopefully, it will be more efficient than seven months.
Yeah, she's excellent.
She is a pro.
Yeah, she was really good.
I think she's still sitting in that office.
She's, it's kind of flipped. Generally, like, she's provided supplementary support to wastewater and primary duties for planning. Now that she's, you know, assumed- It'll flip-flop where her primary function is wastewater and, you know, as-needed support will be provided to the planning department until such time is.
So, she got, she pulled this, the packet all together.
Yes.
So, she's a good egg. So, but she did say that they're off, eventually, they're gonna have an off-site office. We do have to-
She manages a lot for the sewer program, so she has taken on more than any other staffer I've had in that, in that role, and especially after Ray Jack passed away. We picked up a fair amount of slack in the office. We picked up a fair amount of slack in the office alone just to try to provide answers to questions in that interim period and Karen was a huge asset in that, even having just started at the time, so.
Yeah, she was.
Really good.
Yeah. All right, so that's the board, we already did the chair's report, town planners report, we were in the middle of board member committee reports, we're on design review.
No meeting.
Plan review.
No meeting.
Environmental oversight committee.
No meeting.
Historical commission.
No meeting.
Okay, we have one correspondence from Eric Clapper, I don't know if you all read that? I was gonna, if you're, it's okay with you, I'll give him a call and it was basically about introducing more protective aspects in the zoning bylaw, especially with respect to residential lots that abut industrial or commercial space. So he's just sharing with us his experiences and how they decided, him and his family decided to install mitigation from this. They thought all this mitigation, the mitigation plan, they wouldn't be able to see this development next to them and it sounds like they can and they had to do some stuff themselves. But he's done some research and he has some ideas from other local zoning bylaws, just to protect abutters to commercial and industrial space.
As I was saying though, buyers beware.
Mm-hmm.
Have you had them tour?
Buy new industrial property.
Gotta be some industrial there.
It's true, but I think, you know, he might have caught something that a local bylaw did, a neighboring bylaw did and that we didn't, so. I'll give him a call, if that's okay with you guys.
Oh, yeah, fine.
I'll give him a call. And I think with that, we can adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is that okay?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, me too, thank you.